Open the meeting.
A second.
Second, okay.
Okay, member Lanigan?
Yes.
Member McBride?
Yes.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Member Evans?
Yes.
Chair Pollock?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we have that background. Is there anything you'd like to add, Jeff?
No, the sole purpose of this meeting is to discern whether or not the conditions of the C of A have been met. And if so, a motion of that effect. So the building people can do their thing.
Okay, very good.
And that's just on the windows.
Okay. All right.
The windows are mounting, so I'm very excited. Yeah?
Okay. Do you guys have anything to say you'd like to say first, just to start this off?
I think it's important to remember that Chris put in 33 different kinds of windows.
Yeah.
This board's request. And then what Jeff said is that the review here is exclusively whether there are a reasonable number of Muntin varieties. That's position number one. A reasonable number of Muntin patterns is one. Reasonable reduction in the number of casement windows, number two. There are zero casement windows now. A reasonable number of Muntin and sash frame colors.
Yeah.
And traditionally appropriate casings. And a reasonable number of arch framed windows on the brick portion. And Chris addressed all of those in the email he sent with these windows.
Right. I did a little listing of all the window designations under W. And all the color combinations and the Muntin combinations that go with them. So you guys, if you'd like to look at that. But it's quite a little comprehensive list here. It's one thing seeing the picture of it, but I decided to take it out and look at it. And you know, you do have trim that's narrow and wide, as well as variations of the windows themselves, and then the Muntin color as well. And then, as we talk, Chris, the archway is over one section of the building. You can see in there. So again, you guys are all set there? We have questions on the line here? Chris?
Did you guys have anything else?
No, I think that's it.
Good.
I mean, I'll start if we want to go through some of this stuff. I went through the packet pretty thoroughly, as I'm sure everybody did. I also did what Jeff Pollock did. And it looks really good. There wasn't anything that really stuck out. I went through each building. You know, my question right now is if you can give a background on why, right now, we're looking at building one through three and not the entirety of the project? Can you give us an update from where we were last?
Yeah, it's just timing. We've applied for a building permit for one through three only. That those three buildings will take two years.
Right.
And then we'll move on to the next.
So more or less a phase of the entirety of the project for you guys? Nice, nice.
You can speak for the design view. Three through four through six will be similar.
Okay.
But ensuring, at the same time, ensuring we're up to date.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, that was a question I had. I do have a question on what these outline of windows are. On, it's the north elevation of building one. You can find them throughout the build. Just an inquiry.
I asked the same question because I didn't understand. And the architects and Chris, you explained to me, look around at the older buildings, that's what you see is, you know, blacked out windows or, you know, a space where there is no window. We need to, you know, have a pattern, but I think that kills the matter, which is, which is nice for the historical context.
So a design view to interrupt open space of a building that wouldn't normally have a window?
Exactly.
Just a design?
Exactly. And the reason that there is no window there is it's like a kitchen up against it or something.
Instead of just having a long run of no windows?
Exactly.
Okay. I just wanted to make that clear, something that jumped out to me on that one.
I think usually that would be an old house where they filled in a window.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I have one in my barn.
Or you're using that. Like, you can fill in a window, but make it look like you filled it in.
Every time you can fill it in.
Yeah. There's good variety on all buildings. I did have one question on the elevation labeling of building three. Did you guys get my email that I sent or anything like that?
No, definitely not.
Okay, so if we go to building three, page A200 dot three. If we look at the building three south elevation on the top. Now let me know when you're there, I don't want to go ahead.
We're there.
Okay. And then building three north elevation is on the bottom.
Yeah.
In this, in this C of A packet, I believe they were, I believe they were opposite. It might be a flip, it might be a mislabel. You know, and just comparing the two from what we approved in the C of A, then that caught my eye, that that might be a flip or an error. I don't want the building to be built backwards. Joke aside, joke aside.
No, no, it is correct the way you have it. I mean, usually the north is on the top and the south is on the bottom.
Oh. Right, but if you look, if you look at this from building three north and south elevation, from what we approved at the C of A, the north elevation, then maybe these were flipped in this. Because the north elevation has that bump out, almost like the staircase to the roof access, on the left side. And the south elevation has it on the right, where it's on the left in this drawing. You on here? Yeah. Just another thing, I'm just going through my list of questions for you guys, just, I'm just letting you know.
So your question, did something change? Is that a question? I think his question is just what are architects label one or the other wrong?
And that would lead to my question, is if something changed?
This is just a little. So to answer your question, the north elevation, they added in a different type of window on the bottom.
I see that.
And the south elevation is fairly close.
Is the building that's grayed in the background misrepresented in one or the other? Because I think that was part of it.
Do you want me to come out there and point it to you?
No, 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 I see what you're saying. It could be the coloring, I don't know.
I mean, that.
I don't think it's the coloring.
Not the coloring, it's the actual mass that's on one side in one north elevation, and it's on the other side in the other north elevation.
Yeah, okay, well, okay, so the north elevation, it looks like the balcony is just lower on the new one. It was took out, is it?
Yeah, I don't think, no, it's the building in the background, actually. The extension of the building.
Yes.
Yeah, so I didn't notice this, but Dan noticed that this piece in the other north elevation is on this side and facing the other direction. So it did a chunk of this change. Which is good.
So I don't know if there was one or another that was changed or if these were mislabeled. They weren't mislabeled, I just don't know. I just, I don't know if this was accurate at the time, but now is accurate. The building, the drawings that are in front of you are accurate.
Okay. That's the key.
Yeah, he's talking about the stairwell that goes behind.
Can I see it one more time? Because I think I know what we're talking about.
It's like the stairwell flips sides.
Yeah, so.
Part of the different elevation.
Here, go to your north elevation. No, no, right here. North and north.
Yeah.
Here's this, and then this is this way.
It's over here, yeah.
And then on the south, it's this way, on the south.
Oh, the balconies are all this way.
No, Jeff, no. I'm talking about, I'm talking about this right here.
It's this building in the back.
This thing here.
And then this, on this side.
Yeah.
They're flipped in the C of A.
Dan, what does the west elevations look like?
Those, in this one?
Yeah, because you can see where the stairwell is on here. Actually.
The west elevation?
It's, it looks like they moved the stairwell. They moved it from the, from the east elevation to the west elevation.
The stairwell?
Uh, yes, because you've got, or is it elevator? It might be, who knows?
No, that's a stairwell. They could have.
Yeah, I think it's just a, you know, they must have played with the floor plan in there.
Correct.
That's a good catch that I did not pull out the old drawings to see that. There probably can be a couple of things like that.
Well, what you're saying is that this, this document is correct, though.
This document is how it is correct. And you're right, Dan, that could be a change.
Okay. Yeah, it looked like it was completely flipped or changed from what we approved and, or mislabeled. So it's something I thought I'd bring up. And then you added on the building three north elevation as labeled. Are those garage doors or like, what are those doors?
Yeah.
Or windows?
Correct, that's an amenity space.
Okay.
So there'll be, you know, lounge, game tables for the residents, kind of a fun area.
Yeah.
And those will be glass garage doors that will roll up. Kind of contemporary look that you see at, like, Canadegra, the restaurant on the lake.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That kind of look.
Yeah. They go, and that, and it looks like there's a, the grade goes down, though, but that's just, it's not usable. It's just open, to open up the space. Just like a tent. You see a bit of a foundation.
You can open up those doors.
Yeah, okay.
Have a lot of air.
Yeah, good, that, that's good.
All right, that's good. So as we move through backwards, as far as the changes go, when reviewing the C of A, there are some elevation height differences. Jeff Turner can stop me, but on the same building three, the highest elevation approved is 41 feet. Roofline, 43 feet, four inches. And the drawings that you said are definite.
Yeah, I'm not going to stop you, but I'm going to tell you, it's not really relevant to this meeting.
All right, then I'll just say it so it's on record from what I, what else I have found. North elevation, building one, was approved for 43 feet. In the C of A, it's labeled at 47 feet now. East elevation, again, that's the same measurement, so I'm not going to read it back out. Those are the two discrepancies I've found. Oh, excuse me, there is building two also. There is no elevation. We approved it for 46 feet. It might be accurate. But there was no complete height of building two in either of our drawings, so I just pointed it out.
Point of order, that, that is not on the table now. That is for the inspector. Is that not correct, Jeff?
Yeah, that's correct, but there's no, I mean,
We're just, just.
The HPV is putting it on the record, that's all.
That's all I'm putting on the record. Yeah, and then finally, my last comment. In exterior materials, again, Bill McBride, this is just to put it on the record. One of the things that I was talking about was brick veneer. And we've gone through that in the C of A multiple times. Not being any sort of veneer, being real brick. And under exterior material legend, page A200 dot one, number eight says red brick veneer. That's just all I have to say about that. But as far as what's on the docket for tonight for the windows, you guys answered all my questions. Really nice assortment of different windows, Muntin patterns and colors.
I have a question about the windows. I mean, one is a comment that certainly, if you take out all the casements, that wasn't necessarily my intention when I, but I was wondering if there was a reason. Was it just easier to get rid of all of them, or?
You know, the look is a double hung look typically.
Yeah, no, I agree. But.
Casements did really fit, and so we just started to minimize them, and then by the time we're done, there weren't any left, so.
Okay, that's, that works really well with what I had brought up at the last meeting. I was concerned about the wood style casings and what exactly that meant. Because the window surrounds were a particular concern that they actually look historical. What does, what does that mean? What are they made of?
Yeah, it's most likely like, is that a hardy board?
It is a hardy board, okay.
Or some kind of material like that.
Okay, and I don't know if this is something that we asked for at this point or later, but an actual, like, the details of how those pieces all come together in the windows, I think are very important, like what the reveals are and, you know, what will end into another piece of material and what will, you know, be the most proud material. I, from looking at these, it's possible that they're, they're great, but you can't tell without like a, you know, a section through the window and seeing the details of it. So that was number four, I think. Traditional appropriate casings, that was still my concern, is that we get the windows right, or the surrounds for the windows right? Because often with the new materials, they're, they're just not done appropriately like the historic homes that we have here. Well, are we, I was concerned about the door materials, but I don't know if that's on our docket either. But I did see a door that's not on the schedule, and it looks like it's the.
Yeah, was it door B?
I don't know, it's, it's a two panel door that's from the stairwell, so presumably has to be a, maybe a specific type of exit door, but.
In the door schedule, there was a door B on the first building 16 times. It might be interior, so again, I'm just reading off, but there was no, it wasn't represented in the door, door types drawing. So that's, if that's a different door, then it might be door B, but Tina's looking at the exterior door on the south elevation building one.
It appears to be all the staircase doors, so I'm guessing it's some type of an exit door.
It probably has to have a egress push bar on it, which is why it probably has that crossbar in the middle. It's basically.
I think those are panels.
Yeah, those look like, more like panels.
But I guess, around the, around the doors, I would also have similar concerns to the windows, same temp thing, like how that door is cased. And I think the details are going to end up being very similar to the ones around the windows.
How do we approve it without those measurements and those details?
Well, you have to decide whether or not the condition four is the one.
The condition is a reasonable number or.
Variations.
Reasonable number of variations, reasonable number of different colors.
Number four.
The windows of the project should be installed with traditionally appropriate casings. It's not a reasonable.
The rest of them are, I agree with you.
Yeah. I'd like to pick this up and just to clarify, Chris, we talked about the three arch windows. I know where they are now, the W20s. And I also went through and checked how these are coordinated within any panel and within any unit. And they all seem to be correct. And finally, I did a distribution of all of these windows in the units, and there's a good, I mean, I sort of did a little informal grid on that, and they, they seem to fit, you know, distributed appropriately.
Do you want to know where the W20 window is?
It's on the north elevation, building two. So that's page 200 dot 2, page 202.
Oh, third floor, yeah.
That's mine.
I looked at the arches, I found the ones that I was looking for. I agree with what everything that is said, and especially, I think number four is the only criteria that I am curious about. How do we know that without more detailed drawings or pictures? So that was, I would defer to my colleague. What would we need to know to be able to approve that the casings are traditionally appropriate?
Wait, before we jump onto that one, real quick. Window schedule, building two, it's level three?
Yeah.
Okay. W20?
W20 is on the third floor.
Level three.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, they're missing from your actual window schedule. And correct me if I'm wrong, but it's small font. I use the window schedules to review the windows. I didn't see a window 20, but they are on the actual drawing, so that might be.
Window 20, yeah, it's, it's on this sheet. I saw it here, right there.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm building.
It's not on the schedule.
They're missing from the schedule.
Thank you.
What did you?
Well, I already hunted back.
I guess what I would typically see would be an actual, you know, window detail. Like a, you know, cut section through a window, and it would show the detailing, the drip on the, on the sill and what the sill's made of. And I do appreciate all the detailing showing the wider and narrow, where you're going to use that, but there's just a lot of detail around the window. And since they are your main feature on the exterior, I think it's important to get it right. And I guess that's what I was looking for when I was asking for the traditional appropriate casing.
Do you want to see a drawing of the cut or a natural casing?
Yeah, a drawing of how that, how those windows are going. I mean, it'd be like an architectural drawing, not from the, not from the manufacturer, be like your architect would do window details. And I'm sure they do them. You're not going to build this building without window details, but I would want to see those.
Well, I would suggest that it's not really what number four says. I understand what you're saying, and I understand that you want more detail on it. What really number four is saying to me is that the windows of the project should be installed with traditionally appropriate casings. So what are traditionally appropriate casings? What we're saying is they're square wood casings, so narrow square wood casings.
Actually, they wouldn't be that narrow, but.
Brick mold. Arched brick mold, brick sills, precast sills. We're saying those are traditionally appropriate casings.
That's some of the detail, but how those things go together is important. And I did bring this up at the last meeting, and it was condensed into a sentence that I thought we all understood, that I would want to see that those, those casings are going to be proud of the siding. And you will see plenty of places where they're not. You know, the siding kind of ends at the casing, and oh my gosh, it's like a half an inch outside of the casing, and oh, well, there it is. But I don't want to see that in, you know, your 300 windows over here. I want to know that that siding is going to end in that casing, that casing is going to be this wide, and that it's going to look like wood, which you did answer, the hardy plank, but it didn't say what the hardy plank was, so that was a little questionable. I want to know that that sill is going to stick out, and it's going to catch the casing, and there should be some kind of a drip on the bottom of the sill, and there should be another piece of wood underneath that sill. And I, you know, so that's what I'm talking about. So a traditional window has a lot of detailings, it's not just, you know, a cutout in siding. And I know you've seen a lot of applications where it just doesn't come together right, and I don't want to see that happen here, and I would like to have it.
Could you, could you bring in a drawing of one, you know, for the next building reviews? We go forward. Be able to look at that.
For the next apartment.
For the, for the next buildings?
That would be the second phase, that we see.
Yeah, the second phase is the way this has to be done on these ones.
Yeah.
Well, again, I reiterate what I said, which is, I don't think you have purview over the actual detail at this point of how it is constructed. You can make your comments, which is fine, but in this case, you know, the board has a very narrow parameter on what to look at. And I think that we've met that parameter with all of them, including number four. It's not.
I think, I think it's, can be interpreted exactly the way Christina's interpreting it.
I, I agree with that. I think that you've met all of the other criteria, but I think that there should be detailed window drawings.
Well, if there's going to be a point at a later date that you're going to come before me with drawings, and I'm going to be able to say, ah, this doesn't meet the criteria for a window, then I guess, I mean, is that what you're telling me? If you come to me with your drawing later on, I'm going to be able to say, sorry, that's not how the windows should go together? That's not correct, that's today. And so I don't have any, anything in print that shows me exactly how those are going to come together. And I think if you look at any application that we have done on this board, at least in the 10 years that I was on the board, whenever a window was done, you needed to see all those details. And I'm not asking you to do it for every window, but something that's typical. And I'm looking at, you know, your window schedule, and I don't know exactly where all these windows are going.
I do, I have them all here.
So like, window W19, is that in a brick? That must be in a brick.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the surround on that, I have no idea what that surround is. It's just a line that's skinnier at the bottom than it is around the other sides. And there's, I mean, I don't, I don't think it's that much to ask. I guess I had expected that to come in with how you were going to present your traditionally appropriate casings, but.
So I guess the situation is maybe it met the requirements, but could you bring a drawing and just showing the close up of where, how those materials go together for most all the windows in just one drawing?
Well, I'm thinking if there's something that's going to be typical of the window detailing, I mean, certainly it's different in a brick than it is going to be in the hardy, but that, that's, I don't know, do you have another, I guess you have some that are in, I don't think it's as important to have all the different sidings, but one for the hardy, one for the brick, and how those, how those pieces all come together.
I think it is, what we showed you here are 10 pages of the window type videos.
Yes, but there are no window details.
We submitted to Bureau, to Village, we're going to call it a 100-page package of architectural drawings with sections, wall sections and window sections, so.
Do we have any of those?
Check, we see those?
I would like to see those.
Bureau has it.
Oh.
So.
So those should be pretty easy to review.
What I would ask is for this board to make that comment for the consultant that's reviewing that stuff.
Yeah.
They don't have a purview to approve or not.
Right, that's not their jurisdiction, it's not that jurisdiction. Well, we have them here, I think.
It is, it is.
Chris has got them, right? If you're wondering how many are in each.
While we're here, Bill, Joe, do you have any comments?
So this is building one, building two, building three.
Yeah, let me start out very broadly. I think I was impressed by this presentation and how well they addressed the four or five conditions. I, I think Christina makes the point is that we ought to better understand how the frames come together with the background. But overall, I'm, I'm impressed by how effectively this looks against the four or five conditions. And I think we've come a long way in making this look a lot more like the historic character of Main Street and the Village. So overall, I'm, I'm very happy with the windows.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill. Yeah, really well.
They're, they're getting close to it.
Building two?
Oh, here we go.
19. No, see, that's an hardy board.
It's an hardy board and there's no sill on it. There's just a skinnier surround underneath it. I mean, certainly you can, you can do a window that's just got, but it's kind of an oddity. I don't know. I don't think it's too much to ask. I, I guess I expected to see at least one set of details since that.
Did they find anything?
I think he's looking through them right now. So there were two massive sets of plans.
They might be here. They might be.
So they were dropped off to Steve right before he went away for, he was out of the office for two weeks.
Okay.
Okay.
It's not like a really complicated thing, but it is one of those things that if we don't have it in writing, it could turn out anyway.
You are right.
Okay, no requirements? Get those, the windows a little bit more. Maybe a five minute recess?
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion for a five minute recess.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, member Lanahan?
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, we were recessing while you were looking. That was all, that's all we were doing.
I can just answer your question. I mean, there are, I can show you now or after, but there are multiple wall sections that were submitted.
Fantastic.
Show you those different styles. I don't know if that answers your question, but it probably does.
We're in the midst of a recess. Are we going?
Are we going? Okay. Okay, so member Lanahan?
Yes.
Member McBride?
Yes.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Member Evans?
Yes.
Chair Pollak?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Stand by, Bill.
All right, I'll make a motion to reopen the meeting. Second.
Okay, member Evans?
Yes.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Member McBride?
Yes.
Member Lanahan?
Yes.
Chair Pollak?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. All right.
So this is just.
A cross section.
The wall sections for each different building type of wall construction. So there's, you know, again, you're looking at the sills and how it ties in. That shows, I think that, that's what you're looking at, is the siding kind of comes up to it and.
Is that as, as.
That's just one that I found in two seconds. I mean, there's all, all types of different.
Maybe that will be, I guess you could.
So that trim is proud of the siding.
Yeah, and I'm seeing, you know, this, this would, you know, what I'm looking through too. You've got a sill that comes out here and then you've got your. Don't touch it. I'm, I'm not trying it. I'm going to not tap my pen out though. That was silly. But over here, I'm seeing you've got a sill and then the piece of wood underneath it comes out further than the sill. And that's kind of odd.
Yeah.
I'm not sure why that.
Yeah.
And here's a sill here.
This, in this, this one, it seems like this, the, the casing.
Is that?
Yes.
That's actually, the material's bodied up against it in that one.
Yeah, and there's presumably some kind of drip edge up there and.
Are there any dimensions? Because those look, they do look tight, but they are there in some of them.
But like this, I've never seen that detailed before.
That wouldn't make any sense. You wouldn't, that would be a waterproofing issue. So it's probably just a drawing detail or, or error. But obviously the sill needs to come out even with or just beyond the trim and caulked appropriately.
Um, it's over here as well.
I could ask them about that.
This, this isn't the actual height, is it? These, I mean, is this?
No, that's why I break it. Wouldn't fit on the papers.
Yeah, yeah, right. Break, break, break. Okay.
Hi, Bill.
That'll be it for.
That's still building one.
Okay. I just want to see.
So any treatment we would see here for building one would be same for building two?
Most likely, absolutely. But I think there's actually separate details.
Do you, this is all that's necessary for construction?
Correct.
So there's no larger?
I don't know if they did a blow up of it. I doubt it.
No, that's your blow up.
Back in my day.
Okay.
Okay, well, like, if I'm looking at this, I'm saying that's not going to cut it. This could, could be.
Like, could it be a door?
No, no, I don't think that could be a door. Although it is only single pane. What am I looking at? No, it says window trim elevations, that's schedule.
It's, it's just larger because it's over a brick section. This is just a wood section, so this is a larger threshold or.
Maybe a fixed.
Christina, what's the issue with this one?
Well, just when even Chris recognized it, the sill doesn't even extend beyond the trim. You would never do that because you'd have water that would sit in rock.
So maybe if you're comfortable, you say their traditional casings provided that, you know, all sills extend past the trim. And Barrow just confirms that. And I'm assuming Barrow's going to circle this and write and send it back to our architects and say, I guess I think you missed something.
Yeah.
And our architects are going to whip off a new sheet that says, oh, sill inside there, outside the drum.
Okay.
Is that a solution there?
I, I mean, I guess I'd be okay with that.
So do we get to approve it after they send off the new letters? Because it's not what I'm hearing. It's not how that works for us.
Well, if, if the condition is that, if it's, if it is, condition four is met, provided that, and then Barrow checks it, because that's the best that they can do.
Okay.
I don't, I'm not able to rattle off exactly what that would need to look like. Christina, are you able to rattle off exactly?
I mean, I could, I could call out wall section five in building one shows an appropriate sill and surround relationship. And that wall sections six and four do not.
And if that is corrected so that it is met with all windows, then condition four will be.
Okay, and let's, let's see, where's our brick one?
The conditions are that the sill is going to be building two.
Well, it's, we had, the one that is correct, so they all need to be modeled after the one that was correct.
Right. You want me to try and find the section?
I was just going to look for the section in the brick, where there was something in brick and see how that one's detailed.
Yeah, it's the north elevation.
Yeah.
So one side of building two is brick and the other side is hardy board?
Right.
And on the same.
In the same segment of the building?
Yeah.
Correct.
So what you're really looking for, a global designation for those two, for, for different materials, that there's going to be a sill there. And I guess the other trim looks okay according to you. What you see?
Well, I mean, you can't, you can't tell as much from these drawings. I guess people just don't do as many details as they used to. But, I mean, from this one, so what I, what I'm looking at is just pointing out again that, that the sill is, is not out further than the trim that's below it, which I, I just don't think anybody would actually build it that way. But if you approve a drawing like that.
Then they'll build how it's driven. Well, but you also still have Barrow Architecture, Bergman Engineering, Scott Harder Engineering, and Steve Love, your building inspector, are still going to look at this.
But that's not, they're not, that's not what they're looking for. We're the only ones with purview over whether it meets the historic standards that we're looking.
No, I'm sorry.
Whether it's water tough or not, like, it's not that.
Barrow Architecture is reviewing it for compliance with your certificate of appropriateness in those windows.
Can we stipulate that, or can we recommend that detention is being given?
I'm not sure we're there yet, because I'm not going to tell you where we are. But it seems like the motion would be, if that's the exact case, that all, all five conditions have been met, provided that the casings, window casings.
The.
Whatever, whatever fill in that one.
The sill, and so that's correct. And that's correct construction. If we build it like that, it's incorrect. It's a drawing area.
Yeah, but.
I, I can appreciate that, but I also don't want to approve.
No, no. Make a clarification about it, which we agree with.
I'm looking at the.
Just doesn't seem to have that level of detail.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks like they haven't really finished the brick wall sections. There's no.
So it's hardy board, brick, and what other surface?
Which is the walls.
No, I mean, for all three of those surfaces, there should be appropriate trim with drips, a sill.
Sure.
Standard sill.
Yeah.
There's no sill here, so if you.
What, what is the surround with the metal siding?
Okay.
And I'm not really seeing a section through a brick wall. I mean, it could be a brick wall. I really don't know. It's not called out. It doesn't have like. This looks like it might be brick, but there's just nothing above it.
Yeah.
So I don't know that we're getting any further with the, with the drawings. It sounds like we need to approve with the amendment for what it is that we're asking for.
Yeah, to have Barrow view.
Yeah, that's.
Get the right language for that, yeah. So I think the first issue is to say that these conditions is laid forth earlier are met. And provided that Barrow review.
No, it shouldn't be a Barrow review, it should be this board's review.
Well, hold on. Provided that the casement finish is. And then you say what the finishes.
Well, before we even move forward, is that something that we can provide? Window details on the brick, the hardy board and the metal? So that we get all of this correct on number four? This is our, this is our time for the windows on this. It should be the three materials.
It should be all materials, in case there's another one that's in there.
Okay, all materials, whatever, yeah.
I don't know the answers. Only, only know the answer to that.
So. Globally speaking, I mean, just on the issue in front of us without this, these conditions are, have been met. And then we need to transition into this other thought that provides overview on.
Respectfully, I disagree.
What if you describe the detail you're looking for? I mean, I think Christina's main thing is that the trim is proud of the siding.
Yeah.
So you can confirm that.
Is that the right language?
Whatever other detail she was interested in.
Well, you have the trim, you also have the, the sill, which is.
Right, it's the whole painting.
Yeah.
I know, I like that. It's good. But I, I feel like there was, building one, one of the materials, there was an example that you approved of. That you felt like it, that it did actually highlight the multiple pieces. And so what we need is that all materials have that same example of casing. And that might be the clearest way to lay it out, because there was one that was correct.
Well, this one, it seems like it could reasonably be appropriate. And I'm, I guess I'm just, I'm really shocked that that kind of detail is not provided to actually build things these days. But this, this drawing doesn't provide any of that.
Does not know you agree with you.
So if, if the wood surrounds or the wood, wood like surrounds are, are all as depicted in wall section five on building one. Can we reference this, this sheet that we don't have? Sheet A five oh one point one? I think that would, that would suffice. And, but it's. So what they, what they said on here is wide and white.
So there's narrow.
And then there's. Narrow, but there's no dimensions. And what is wide and what is narrow? And on this drawing, they're showing a, a trim piece below the sill that is pretty much as wide as the trim piece at the top. That's not what's being shown in these. But I think this is actually more appropriate to have the wider piece. So if we, if we.
Say that they all have to be like that.
So this, this would be an appropriate traditional casing in this wall section. I don't see anything showing the detailing for in a metal.
Yeah, looking at this, it's, there is, I don't see metal on these first three buildings. It's actually.
Oh, so maybe there are no situations.
Yeah, it's just, it's actually hardy, vertical, more hardy.
Okay. Yeah, that one, I guess if I looked at that, number 11 is. No, you do have, you've got standing seam metal siding on sheet A two hundred point one, building one, south elevation. That's a standing seam metal.
Yeah, with windows W thirty one on them.
And window twelve. I'm looking at window twelve. You must be looking at a different. So I don't know how that. I don't know what that surround is. Is, I mean, are you going to have a hardy, hardy surround?
Most likely. It'll be hardy surrounding the window, just like all the other.
And the window twelve over here. So you'll have a, a narrow.
Yeah, it wouldn't be wrapped in something thin. It'd be the same detail as it is on a hardy. It wouldn't be wrapped in like a thin metal.
You're not going to have, yeah, so I guess we can also say, so where there is a metal, where there's metal siding, the windows will also be cased in hardy. In a, in a similar fashion to the building one, wall section five. Okay, I mean, that, that would be, I think that would be okay.
And what, finally, just what about the brick?
The brick, so yeah, what you said about the brick is that it will have, trim style and color will be brick and black. And I've only got the one that has the bricks around in it.
Is your, is your question on the brick, on the sill, if the sill overhangs the?
Yeah.
Well, what is the sill made of? It's a brick sill?
There are multiple, yeah, brick or there's some precast.
The precast ones, yeah, I mean, I, I could see that. Where do they, oh, I see, it was on the other, the backside. So we've got brick sill and precast sill.
Yeah, this is a brick sill in that one, the W twenty.
Yeah, I'm seeing 26 and 27 where it's filled out with the brick and precast sill.
It's not flush, but it's, the sill sticks out beyond the wall.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
Have you...
And that, I mean, that the, that the window will be, you know, set in enough that the brick creates the surround on the sides, but you don't have any, any surround on a brick. I mean, you could, but you don't have to. Kendra, did you have any questions or interest in the, like, how that surround goes on the brick?
Well, I guess when I'm sitting here chewing on it, I wrote down, I was like, well, as long as it sticks up enough. This is the Board of Details. Like, enough is a tricky measurement, just like narrow versus wide. It's all very subjective. Um, I could point to a picture, like the ones that we had at the last meeting. I don't have that in front of me to be able to tell you, oh, that is how wide. How exactly how big is that? I don't, I don't know, and those details aren't here, so I don't know. We lumped all the work windows, not the new built, so...
Wouldn't barrel have a handle on all of these nominal dimensions?
No, I mean, we're not the deciding board.
Yeah, because, um...
Okay.
Yeah, we, we're just in the dark on what that could be or should be.
I don't know. We can build an approval around...
Well, or the...
Possible table, Brearman, right?
Yeah.
I missed that, Dan. What did you say?
Jeff Turner said, build around possible approval, which is an option, or there's an option to make sure that we get this right and have the correct information brought in front.
Well, I want to make it clear. You've already given an approval. We're reading the certificate of appropriateness.
Based on these requirements.
Did we meet these, this requirement?
And then there's a lot of reasonable conditions, and then another one that doesn't say the word reasonable, but I think that the standard is, is what we're proposing, reasonably traditional casings.
Yeah.
And I think we could determine that if we have those measurements in front of us. It, it's not about whether, reasonable's not in there, and I don't think that this is, um, a place for us to be contentious, I guess is what I'm saying. Like, this isn't stopping the approval in general. This is, we just want the dimensions to make sure this turns out the way we all want it to turn out, and they're not, they're not included, and so we're trying to figure out a way to determine that.
Here, here's a suggestion. Let's approve it based upon the four or five conditions, and allow Christina primarily to create a paper that describes what it would take to make us completely comfortable with point four.
I'm, um, thanks, Bill. I'd rather not create a paper, um, but I think, I think we can cover it, and you guys tell me what you, how you feel about this, if we just state this in a...
Yeah.
And, um, a little guidance from you, Jeff, if you think that covers the concerns, or say, I think you're aware of what my concerns are. That the window surround and sill details will be as shown in drawing A501.1, Wall Section 5. That's the one that we liked. For the hardy plank exteriors and metal exteriors, and for the brick exteriors, the caster brick sills will extend beyond the siding. I mean, this, I think that is probably what was going to happen anyway, but I like your writing.
Yeah.
Do you feel like that covers?
Yeah, do you want to say anything about dimensions? Because the, the brick is going to be veneer. It's going to be the, a really thin, and they're going to say it extends past it. Is there anything that needs to be traditionally accurate?
Dan, let me just clarify. They call it veneer, but it is not thin brick, like, uh, the tile. It is a real brick.
So it's the brick you brought in?
It is the brick I want. Not changing my mind. It is a real brick. It's very expensive. I'm trying to purchase it now. So they call it veneer, but it's not what you think veneer is, which is tile.
And, and on how small these, these are, it's hard to see without dimensions. You just can't tell. So that's all I'm saying.
They haven't even designated the brick in here, but I think it, it clarifies between a brick that you would put on an exterior wall, or a brick that you would use in a paver, or, because the ones that you put in the ground are not suitable to put on the walls. The walls are not suitable for the ground, so...
Okay.
That's the way I take it, with veneer.
So Megan, what do we have right now on paper?
Well, I'm writing little notes for reminders, because I'm going to go back through here and like...
Right, but that's not going to be what, somewhere we're going to put in the motion.
Yeah, I think we should, yeah.
We're going to, we're going to get with, we're going to start with what Chris stated here, and if there are additions, or if it's not suitable, then we'll figure that out. We're going to start there.
I have a question for you, like, the rest of the board, how, well, I don't see, there's not a lintel for every, shown for every brick application. I see a soldier course for W8, and there is a galvanized C-channel lintel, which must be a standout kind of window, that doesn't...
I think there's a balcony or something.
Ah, okay.
What window, W27?
And then, of course, the curved lintel is, is shown as brick, and I think we assume that it's brick, even though it's not labeled as brick. But for the rest of the windows in the brick, what will the lintels look like? Is it going to be soldier course standard? Or...
Can you say anything?
So I, I actually don't have, I should pick out of, of an example. So I'm looking at, just at the window schedule, and I'm seeing that window 18 shows a soldier course of bricks, and then window 19 shows a brick sill, but no, um, no lintel.
Are you looking up here?
Yeah.
That's building, that's eight.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I can't read. So window eight has, shows the lintel being soldier course of bricks, and then window nine has no lintel.
Right.
Um, is there just going to be like a piece of metal in there, or...
Are you questioning number nine?
Yes.
There are no number nines in Buildings 1, 2, or 3.
Ah, okay.
As proposed in this package. There's seven of them in Building 1 of W8. That was the question you wanted to talk about for the ones?
Um, no, W8 has a precast sill, which will look wonderful, and soldier course of bricks above, but that's, that one and the, uh, W20 are the only ones that actually show a lintel and a brick. So are there any other windows that are in the brick? So I guess I just have to look at the elevations and find which ones I'm talking about.
Because you want each of the lintels to be, to discuss the individual materials, or that it should...
I think it should be a lintel.
Yeah.
When you have a brick exterior, I think that, and, and probably, well, like, this one doesn't. It just shows running bond going across the top. Um, window 26, window 26.
So can we generalize it by saying they should all have a lintel?
Is that, is that what you're intending, is to just have running bond going across the top?
Which...
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the north elevation of Building 2, and the first and second levels.
Yeah, I, I think it's just running on over the top, because they're trying to get that inset look, that the windows stack on top of each other. And I didn't, I assume that there is a window, there's a window sill with brick, and the top, I think they just have running bond.
So is the, is the inset, it's to two...
See, like, the, the vertical incents?
I do, yeah. Flemish bond and the infill. So the lintel at the top is one inch proud of the surrounding wall, and is the infill, the Flemish course that's in the infill, is that actually set back? That's, it's inset two inches from the soldier course, and then the windows are set into that, but well, how far into that are they set in? And then the sills from below those, do they come out to the soldier course, or are they set in with the Flemish course as well?
I think that the sill would be flush with the outer...
It's going to be flush with the, with the, um, running bond, excuse me, not the soldier course.
Yes. Either way, I think you're going to get the look.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just, I'm just trying to understand coming together. I don't necessarily think you always have to have a lintel with the brick, because you'll have your metal lintel, which is really going to hold it up, but I do think it looks good when you have a lintel, because even on, I'm, I'm moving on to the west elevation, you, let's see, W3, W3 doesn't even show a sill. W3 over here, that's what you're going to say. So it's a W3 window, but with a different surround. I guess, I mean, is that an intentional?
I assume it is, especially if they did call it out.
No sill?
On, on that elevation, it looks like.
I think you need a sill.
Right, I think it's less about whether it was intentional on their part, and whether we think it should always be there or not.
Yeah, well...
Well...
So obviously, we have issues with some of these details.
Well, I think we're there. I think that she's just found a detail that she's questioning, so I mean, you can say how you prefer it.
Yeah.
On that elevation, it looks like there are no sills and no lintels, and there's other variation that they put in there. They put the inset, and the transom windows, and different size windows, so...
Yeah. For brick exteriors, um, I think they need to have a sill. I, I mean, I don't know how you could not have a sill.
They do.
I think you could get away without having, I'd prefer to see the lintel as well, but you can get away without it.
So I think we come back to, we have these issues about that.
Yeah, that's what we're there.
Yeah.
Well, is that something that you're willing to be...
I mean, if you want sills on that one elevation, but...
Well, I want sills on every window, I think. I mean, I don't see...
There, I mean, we're talking about brick only right now, right? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, the...
Because, you know, obviously the siding's different. You're talking about brick.
I think every window has a sill, but they're not brick sills, is what I don't know.
You haven't given me any window details. You haven't given me, oh, well, in this style window, we're going to go with this thing, and so I'm telling you, what we're going to approve on is that every window that is in a hardy plank or metal exterior will have details as shown in this drawing, which has a sill and has a surround, so I'm not making room for a situation that I have no details for and I have no representation of. And in the brick, I'm making one, I'm saying one thing. In the brick exterior, all windows will have a caster brick sill, and the sill will extend beyond the siding. I, I mean, I, or you can provide details.
That's fine. I'm not arguing with you.
So I'm not, I'm just, I'm just calling out the brick.
What about the lintel?
Um, well, how, you guys, I mean, I don't, you, you can do brick windows without a lintel. I don't think it looks as attractive, but it's not about what I find attractive. It's that you can do it, and if that's what you prefer to do, um, I think you, you could, I think you could probably find some historic applications that have windows that didn't put a lintel on the top, if that's something that you, you guys prefer the, the look of. Um, I think it's a kind of 1970s industrial look, but, um, but if, if that's what they want to do, I can't say that it never existed, if that's what we need to stand on, but I just, I, I wouldn't put a brick window in without any sill at all. That just seems foolish.
I don't think anybody's questioning on that. I think we're in agreement.
Um, but if you, you know, I'm also perfectly okay if someone has a, an opinion that they think it does not fit the traditional look without having a lintel as well, but I, I know that you have a particular interest in the, the brick windows, so I don't want to be the only one talking on the table.
Okay, that's all right.
But I'm, I'm prepared to say these...
Could you just run through that just again?
Run through them, but, I mean, we may, we should be made part of the motion, so don't run through them.
I think we're just talking about our consensus before we put forward the motion, just to hear what we're saying.
Yeah.
Um, so, yeah, feel free to add to this, but the window surround and sill details will be as shown in drawing A501.1, um, drawing 2, Wall Section 5, um, for all hardy plank and metal exterior situations, um, applications. Um, for brick exterior, all windows will have a caster brick, cast, is it cast stone or cast concrete? What is it going to be? Cast or brick sill, and the sill will extend beyond the siding.
Am I alone? I'm wanting a lintel. I mean, that makes me in the minority of them, so I'm not going to hold it up if I'm the only one, but I am looking to the other board members here.
Well, you know, I mean, I guess I'm feeling like now I have to do some research and find, are there traditional applications where there's no, where there's no lintel above, if that's what you guys really want to do, and I'm willing to, yeah, do a little research here, but...
Yeah, unfortunately, I've looked through this, and I've just been doing a little extra. I use, I use this as my main, uh, research for counting your windows, the window schedules, and I just keep finding some errors, so I'm not sure what, what volume of windows are accurate. I don't think that changes my decision on any of, uh, most of what's in this, the motion here that we're looking at, but I'm just letting you know, the window schedule is... But I'm just letting you know, the window schedule is fairly, fairly incorrect for this part.
You mean the schedule that has the counts?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Building two window schedule shows you only have three W3s. None on the first floor, unless I'm looking at it wrong.
Well, if it turns out you can't, right?
Well, that's why I just said, unless I'm looking at it wrong. This is the only window schedule for building two, I see.
There are 10 W3s in building two. Dan, what was the number?
Any thoughts here?
I'm, I'm reluctant to require that there be a lintel. I would prefer to see more lintels. But I don't think that it's actually something that wasn't done, particularly in, in the more industrial applications that we're looking at. I mean, historically, they, they would have probably had a lintel because that's how they built. It was just as sensible. But it's, it is a new build, and it's industrial. And it's got some new, you know, stylistic things coming into it. And since it's supposed to look like the the commercial vernacular of the canal. I mean, I think it would be okay. I mean, what you're going to end up seeing is it'll look something like, not like a big picture window like that. But you're going to see like a running bond coming across the top. I don't think it's the end of the world, because you've got the incents. And I don't know that we, I'm willing to say you must, must do a lintel as much as I would, I would do it if I were building. But, because I'd like the look of it. But I do think that a sill is appropriate. But, so it's more of a, just a stylistic preference, in my opinion. And I can't, can't require someone to do something that I would like to look at.
Any other thoughts? Bill?
No, but I'd like to see us define, Christina, define everything that she's looking for on this a little more completely.
I don't really, I mean, I'm not going to give them dimensions that they have to do because I think that they're going to have some different applications. And I'm reluctant to get that specific. And it's also not my job.
It's not your job.
I thought you were writing on the paper.
All right.
But Bill, did you hear when I read what I thought would kind of cover the situation? Did you want me to?
Yes, no, I did, yes.
Would there be something you'd like to add to that? Because certainly, it's not the, you know, Lanahan show here.
No, but, but would you define it for all of us very, in totality?
So to officially make the motion now?
Oh, I mean, I think I'm just giving conditions for the three exterior siding materials and how the windows will each come into those materials. And it's, it's a pretty broad approval. And it's based on a drawing that you don't have, unfortunately. But they, it's, you know, probably enough detail here to, to get it right. But it's, there's, they have a window section that shows a sill that, you know, appears to be in the appropriate place. And the surround seems to be proportionally appropriate. So I feel, I feel comfortable with that. And I mean, I know they don't want to build anything incorrectly or not attractive either. So I think we're kind of all on the same page. But I want to have these couple of things in place. So what I said, Bill, I'll just, I'll just read through it again. So you can tell me if you want to add something in there. Is that the window surround and sill details will be as shown on this drawing for the hardy plank and metal exterior applications. And for the brick exterior, all windows will have a caster brick sill, which will extend beyond the siding. We don't have a drawing for that one, but I think that's pretty clear. And the, the brick surrounds, just so you know, we're not talking about the surround that goes on the three sides of the top and the two sides of the window. Because when you build with brick, the brick just kind of comes up, and then the window's set back. So you don't, you, you, you could have some wood trim in there, but, you know. Yeah, you don't, you don't need it, and it's not something that is, I don't know. I wouldn't say it's not done, but you don't need it. And that's not the look that they're going for here. But the sill would be the one, the one piece that's not shown correctly and would need to be done correctly. So that's the piece that I'm calling out. But if you, if you feel like we need to add some, something to that, please do.
No, I think it's complete. Jeff, we need to put that into a motion, right?
Correct.
So when would we, when would we, when would we go back and make sure that checks out?
We won't.
We don't.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly.
Motion? I'm just, I've just become a little upset in the last five minutes that my schedules were so off that I was looking at all day Saturday morning. I didn't mean Saturday, all day Saturday morning. On Saturday during the morning, I looked at it. This afternoon, I spent probably two hours on it. The window schedules are incomplete. The numbers are wrong. So that was, that's just a little upsetting. And then I'm sitting here, I'm like, there's that many W3s on that elevation? Because in the window schedule, I didn't go look at the entire side of the building and count where all the W3s are. I went to the Excel spreadsheet that you provided that shows all the windows that you have on your schedule. I thought that would be complete. So I'm just a little upset about that. On top of everything I had mentioned at the beginning of the meeting. Any other thoughts? Bill, any other thoughts?
No.
I've got one more question. The window sill itself, is that hardy plank? That wouldn't be hardy plank, would it? On the, in the, in the hardy plank and metal exterior, what's the sill made of? Is it wood?
It's a thicker type of hardy plank.
They actually make a sill?
Yes, it's square.
Okay.
It's square, I mean, it's to imitate one by trim.
But they, and they cut a sill out of it, like with the slope and the, you know, like the... One piece, okay. I've not, actually, you know, we didn't put that in on our house. And I haven't worked with hardy plank other than drawings. And I think the people that have put it in, in the village, I think they've used actual wood for the window details. So I'm not opposed to using the hardy plank, but I just don't have as much experience with it. So I don't know what they make. And I think it used to be that they just did the siding. And they didn't have all the extra pieces that you could add in.
And in the one that we're calling out, though, it doesn't say what the materials are? I thought that's why we were approving it, was not only the look, but also the materials?
No, there are, there are no materials. But Chris is telling us that the materials are all hardy plank. That hardy plank makes an appropriate material for sill and surround that coordinates with the siding. I can't verify that. But I assume that, that's something that, I guess I could verify. I've got my, you know, my world right here on the phone.
Is that pre-cut at the side, or is that come that way?
It's all cut, it's like...
Okay, all right.
Comes and runs right towards.
Yeah, all right.
Is the language of the motion that we approved the C of A? Or that they have met the criteria? What is the way that it's phrased?
The C of A has already been approved. Your, your, your...
Saying they've met the criteria?
Will be that they have met the conditions of the C of A.
Once.
We're only talking about point number four of the C of A, right? And we're, we're elaborating on that. So I think a motion needs to be made by Christina to approve all the points with the modification or elaboration on point number four.
They've met the points.
Well, the conditions have been met.
Conditions have been met.
Provided that with regard to condition four. And then you say what you're going to say.
Yeah.
Jeff, what's your direction here?
I'm sorry?
What, what's your direction here?
My direction is what I just said, that you make a motion.
I didn't...
Of the C of A have been met, provided that, and then you go on the lines.
Yeah.
Formalist time.
Do you guys want me to make the motion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so I will make a motion to, do I make a motion?
Make a motion.
The conditions have been met. Okay, sorry. I don't make a motion. You make a motion. You guys make the motion.
We'll second the motion.
Okay, I'm a good seconder. I will make a motion that the conditions have been met, provided that with reference to number four, the window surrounds and sill details will be as shown on drawing A 501.1, drawing two, wall section five, for all hardy plank or metal exterior applications. And the surrounds and sills will be made of hardy plank material. For brick exterior applications, all windows will have a cast or brick sill, which will extend beyond the siding.
I'll second that.
How do we vote? Okay, so Chris, I'm sorry. Member Lanahan?
Yes.
Member McBride?
Yes.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Member Evans?
Yes.
Chair Pollak?
Yes.
Motion passes. I don't have to write findings of fact. No? There's, okay, that's what I figured. Do we need to have like a copy of this that we submit with the?
It's an official filed document of the village.
I did not reference the set of drawings. Will it be of like?
Oh.
I said, I just said the drawing number.
Right.
Okay, I just feel like if someone ever wants to reference this for some reason, would they be able to sign it? Do you think we should just make a copy of, or would that be?
It's going to be hard to make a copy, so why don't you just say it?
But you can say A 501. Can we just say a permit or something? Just add that.
Finding of fact, drawing A 501.1. I don't, I don't know what the legal...
I really think you should make a motion to clarify that you're talking about blah, blah, blah of the building for your drawings submitted to the village.
See how my first motion went?
It went perfectly.
All right, I'm making a motion to clarify my earlier motion that drawing A 501.1 is part of the set of drawings that were...
Building one, section six.
No, no.
Building permit drawings submitted to the village of Pittsburgh.
Building permit drawings submitted to the village of Pittsburgh for Westport Crossing.
Would there be multiple, would there be multiple drawings that change again? Okay, there you go.
Okay, Member Lanahan?
Yes.
Member McBride?
Yes.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Member Evans?
Yes.
Chair Pollak?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I make a motion to close the meeting.
I second. Okay, Member Lanahan?
Yes.
Member McBride?
Yes.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Member Evans?
Yes.
Chair Pollak?
Yes.
Whoa.
Messed around with that one.
Yeah.